Welcome, everybody. Good evening. We will start with the roll call and Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Here.
Carlson?
Yes.
Matthews?
Here.
Mella?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. If anyone will please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on a dot, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no ceremony presentations and appointments tonight. We'll move on to five and Suzanne?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening we have the customers, Mr. and Mrs. Weber, have withdrawn their application. So, item number nine A under public hearings, we will not be hearing tonight.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to the consent calendar and Suzanne?
Okay. This evening on the consent calendar, we have the minutes from the May 21st for your approval, as well as a contract for Phase One Environmental Site Assessment for the Aquatic Center property to be conducted by Matrix Environmental Services LLC in the amount of $2,100.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we'll call for motion.
Move to approve. Stereo.
Very good. Seven. There we go. It's one of those nights. Okay, Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey? Yes. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight and no ordinances on initial posting. So, moving right along to public hearings. And I'll start with this announcement. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during these public hearings. That said, we will move on to nine B and Laura, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is an application to approve ordinance number 1241 as requested by John Robert Gatlin. He is the property owner. It's an application to request the vacation of the common interior lot line and associated 10-foot utility and drainage easement between lots one and two of Greens Edition filing number two with addresses of 311 and 317 East Bowman Avenue in the Urban Residential UR Zone District. And I have a brief presentation. So, this map shows a very general location, given the scale of Woodland Park roughly. The applicant's two lots are right there on that little red dot. So, north of Highway 24 and east of Highway 67. This is a close-up showing a typical neighborhood view of the area. And what you can see is that City Hall is down here on this little red dot. The public library is right here. And the applicant's two lots are right here just north of the downtown area. And this is a close-up of the two lots. These are the two lots owned by Mr. Gatlin. This is Lot One with the house on it. And this is Lot Two on this side right here. This is a general representation of the zoning in the neighborhood. So, the UR is the Urban Residential Zone District. This is the Bowman's Lot, or the Gatlin's Lot, I'm sorry, at the intersection of Bowman and Highland. And it's all within an Urban Residential Zone District. These are two illustrations of the lot. The first one is from the intersection of Bowman and Highland. Bowman and Highland is from the northwest corner of the lot, looking into Lot One where you can see the residence. And this particular photograph on this side is looking from the northeast corner, looking over Lot Two to Lot One where the house is right there. And so, the interior lot line pretty much runs north-south, kind of along that line there. And you can see where Lot Two is very steep. Or you can sort of see. It's hard to see on a two-dimensional image like that. But Lot Two is very steep. And he's merging the two lots to give him more buildable area. This is a schematic of the interior lot line vacation. So, the lot line runs north-south. And this is Bowman Ave. to the north and Highland Street to the west. He is looking and requesting a vacation of this lot line from that point to that point, which is approximately 139.86 feet long. And he will be vacating a five-foot easement on each side of that lot line for the 10-foot utility easement that's associated with that lot line. And he's combining this so that his perimeter will not change at all. So, staff has done a review of the municipal code and finds no adverse effect on utilities, access, road construction, area traffic patterns, or adjacent landowners. The combined lot will result in one contiguous lot. It does conform to the comprehensive plan and conforms to all the limitations in the Urban Residential Zone District. The deeds are in the same tendency currently. And there is the requirement to remove any unnecessary water and sewer stubs if they're in place. Referrals for this application were sent to the Woodland Park Utilities Department, to the Public Works Department, and to the Field Inspector, also to external agencies like the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IAA, Black Hills, Baja Cable, and Century Link. No concerns were received from any of the referral agencies beyond their standard responses. Staff found no concerns with respect to compliance with the code and with the comprehensive plan, and received no public comments based on our adjacent property owner notices, the posting on the property, and the publication in the Pike's Peak Courier. Staff does recommend that we approve, that council approve ordinance number 1241, vacating the common interior lot line and the associated 10-foot utility and drainage easement, which is five feet on each side of that lot line between lots one and two of Greens Edition filing number two, 311 and 317 East Bowman Avenue in the Urban Residential Zone District, as requested by the property owner, Mr. John Robert Gatlin. Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you very much. Counsel, questions?
It's a pretty straightforward case, but I've always wondered, what is, when you co-join a lot, then that becomes one single lot. It's not two lots with a vacated easement, correct?
Correct.
What is the impact then on the tax base for the new one-single-lot property tax?
You know, I believe that the tax implications are less. Instead of paying for two lots and taxes on two lots, it's a combined lot. And the assessor assesses it that way as one lot, one residential lot. Whereas this one is one vacant lot and one residential lot.
Yeah, that was my thought. Thanks, Laura. Laura, it's a good presentation.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe Mr. Gatlin was going to be here tonight.
He is.
Oh, here he is. He's here. And if you have any questions of him, he's available to come up.
Sounds great. Counsel has no other questions. We'll open it up to public if anyone has any comments or concerns. If not, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, JR. Welcome. Nice to see you, sir. If you'll just give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. John Robert Gatlin, 311 East Bowman Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. I appreciate your consideration for this. The neighbors in the cul-de-sac are all in favor of it. What it does is it does not allow a house to be built on that lot, which would really disadvantage most of my neighbors. And I chose not to have a house built there myself, or even an extension. I may put a one-car garage on the lot line, but it would be close to the cabin. And it would not require any setback variance or anything like that. But that'll be in the future. The lot is very steep, and it's full of aspen. And the builder who built my cabin also owned that lot. And he had the right to build a house there, but it would have really disadvantaged me. So, I chose to buy the lot and recognize that I would never build on it. There's a circle drive, half of it's in that lot. So, consequently, it's very unbuildable. And I think everybody will appreciate the fact that I'll leave it natural.
Great, thank you very much. No more questions? We'll close the public comment and call for a question.
Move to approve ordinance number 1241, vacating the common interior lot line and associated 10-foot utility drainage easement between lots one and two, Greens Edition filing two, on 311 and 317 East Bowman Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado.
Second. Great, thank you, Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, JR. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Sally in consideration of approval of Southwest Valley subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, council members. I have a brief PowerPoint for you regarding Southwest Valley subdivision filing number one. This is a request from the property owner, Jay Baker, who is required to subdivide his property as part of the annexation agreement that this property was annexed on August 15th, 2013, into the city and zoned community commercial. As part of the annexation agreement, this property was five different parcels. And legal subdivision was required prior to a certificate of occupancy for the remodel of his office building and finalization of this site. So, the public hearing this evening begins with the aerial of the subject property, which is outlined in yellow, which was an existing yard that had the shop on it, as well as an older cabin. And the cabin is being remodeled for a office building to serve the Teller County Waste Operations. You can see that this parcel is sandwiched between Highway 24 and County Road 231. This is a very simple subdivision that combines those five parcels. Wanted to share with you, though, the zoning map and the subject parcel being zoned. The existing conditions on the site shows the maintenance repair shop, the future office building, and the contractor services yard. And the applicant had begun to build the buffer wall that is a combination of a block wall and a fence to isolate the yard from the business operation with the office building. So, right now, the applicant has met the conditions to receive a zoning development permit. We are waiting to receive the payment for the TAP and the fees in order to issue the building permit to finish out the construction of the office building and do the remaining site improvements, including surfacing, paving of the site. The subdivision plat, I know you can't read this. It's in your packet. This is a standard-type legal process for the subdivision to have a legal description, the dedications, and the proper sign-offs from the city, as well as the recording information with the county The key with the exhibit is that the left side shows the parcels as deeded. And as I mentioned, there are five parcels associated with this tract. There is an existing easement that is a 30-foot-wide access easement to this parcel on the north that is retained on the site. So, the one-single combined lot will be surrounded with easements, public easements 10-foot wide, and this 30-foot-wide access easement. I might mention that this shaded area was the questionable parcel that has been quick claimed to the Turners. So, that has been completed prior to issuance of a zoning development permit. In our zoning regulations, there are several design standards and aspects that deal with subdivisions, final plats. Most of those, though, deal with residential plats or major subdivisions. This is a minor subdivision. So, there are very few items that relate to a single-lot subdivision, minor subdivision. But I will report that the plating information was drawn by a surveyor, reviewed for accuracy, and easements, and meets our standards. It also meets the purpose of combining the five parcels and provides for a buffer to mitigate impacts. The site considerations, including drainage, grading, utilities, landscaping, and access, have all been met through the site plan review process that was presented to all of you back in February, let's see, nope, it was November 6th, 2014, when the conditional use, special use, and site plan review took place of this parcel and its recommended or proposed improvements. The street frontage is required to have a minimum of 40 foot of street frontage for a parcel. This has nearly 200 feet. The easements I've mentioned are adequate for this developed property. And there is, there are no water courses. There is onsite detention and a water quality feature that will handle the runoff and detain that and release it into the system in the road. So, with that, all the conditions for a minor subdivision have been met. The plat is drawn to legal standards. And the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing regarding the Southwest Valley subdivision filing number one and recommended approval unanimously for this 1.83-acre parcel. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel?
Again, it seems pretty straightforward. But I do recall, and you pointed out in the traffic and roadway analysis, that the applicant agreed to contribute $40,000 to Teller County for road improvements.
Yes.
Has that occurred yet?
Yes. That was made within the time period and delivered to the county.
Sally, were the remainder of the requirements of Mr. Baker met relative to our meeting of two months ago?
We have a letter of credit in place for the improvements. The conditions say that those improvements must be made by the end of this year, and that he is on track to make those improvements and complete the project.
Okay, terrific. Phil?
Yeah, Sally, under public notices, it indicates that you've received no written correspondence, but that two neighbors contacted staff about the process and status of the CUP improvements, et cetera. Can you comment a little bit on that?
That's correct. Yes, I met with Diane Allen prior to the Planning Commission hearing to review the status of this project. I don't believe she's here this evening. And then I also had a conversation with Liz Turner on the phone. And the Turners are here this evening.
Thank you.
John?
How many planning commissioners voted on this matter at their meeting?
You said it was unanimous.
It was unanimous. And I'm just checking in the minutes, there was only one commissioner absent. So, therefore, eight of the nine commissioners voted in favor of this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would like to add that Mr. Tim Seibert is here this evening. He is the representative of the property owner and would be happy to make a presentation or answer questions for you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sally. Mr. Seibert, would you like to come forward? Welcome back. Just give us your name and address. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Tim Seibert with NES Incorporated, 619 North Cascade Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Thank you for your time this evening. I have no additional information to add at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, terrific.
Thank you.
I don't think counsel has any at this point. But we'll open up to public comment if, we'll call you if we need you. How's that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we'll open this for public comment. And if there was anyone here that would like to step forward at this point? Okay, if not, we will. We could wait. I've got Mr. and Mrs. Turner on my list that would like to chat in regards to this. If they would like to present right now, that would be fine. This would be the appropriate time. Thank you very much. If that's the case, public comment is closed. And counsel, do we have any other questions before we move forward?
As long as this doesn't change the other requirements of everything that he's doing to the lot, I don't see a problem there.
Okay, then I'll call for motion. Consider approval of Southwest Valley subdivision filing number one for the purpose of creating a single lot, final plat containing 1.83 acres located at 1,000 and 1,050 County Road, 231, and the rest of the language is there.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thanks. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we will move forward to new business. And we'll start with Laura. Welcome back, Laura.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. This is new business, item 10A. It's an application by Ms. Holly Morrell, who is the event organizer for Movies Above the Clouds special event. Movies Above the Clouds has submitted an application for a temporary use permit. All temporary use permits that occur beyond 9:00 PM pursuant to the municipal code must be approved and authorized by council. And the application is proposing to start the movies around 8:30 PM to, and around 10:15 PM, with cleanup to occur shortly thereafter. This is the second year for Movies Above the Clouds. They did have two movie nights last year in 2014. This year, they're proposing movies on June 14th, July 24th, August 28th, and September 25th. As many of you know, this is going to be at the Yew Pass Cultural Center, which is that little green space, the pavilion on the green right there. And there, of course, is Highway 24. And most of you, of course, know where Yew Pass Pavilion is. Staff did review the application for conformance with Section 1862050(c), which are the temporary use permit standards in the municipal code. Typically, the temporary use permits are reviewed administratively for most permits. But again, because this one is proposed to occur beyond 9:00, it is here before council. Section 1862050(b) is the stipulation that requires council review. Staff looked at the application for the temporary use, as well as the extension for time, in compliance with the standards, and found that the site layout, the site triangle, parking, any impacts, the compatibility, the licensing, and the signage requirements can all conform to the municipal code. Referrals were sent out to the Public Works Department and to the Field Inspector with respect to this temporary use permit applications. No concerns were expressed. Staff found no concerns with respect to compliance with the standards. Public notices were sent out to adjacent property owners within 150 feet of this site. A poster was posted on the site, and publication in the Pike's Peak Courier was, did occur. And staff has received no comments. There are no concerns. And staff does have a recommendation, which is included in the staff report, and is in very small print on the slide in front of you. Staff does move to approve temporary use permit number 15050100, submitted by Ms. Holly Morrell, Movies Above the Clouds, for a special event to host movies at the Yew Pass Cultural Center, Midland Pavilion on the Green, on June 14th, July 24th, August 28th, and September 21st, 2015, subject to compliance with the following conditions. One, movie sound and light systems shall be shut off by 10:15 PM with cleanup completed by 11:00 PM. Two, contact the Public Works Department, Suzanne Brown, 687-5293, for all city-related support. A $100 refundable deposit may be required to ensure the return of borrowed items. Three, signage must comply with the municipal code stipulations. Litter on the green and surrounding areas and parking lots and sidewalks shall be picked up. That was condition number four. Number five, fencing shall be erected to protect the construction of the mural on the east face of the cultural center. And number six, the applicant shall be subject to all representations made in the temporary use permit application for this special event. That is all that staff has with this application. I'm available to answer any questions. I believe Ms. Holly Morrell was going to be attending, or Ms. Robin Paisley is here tonight and is available to speak if you have any questions. Yes, Commissioner, or council member?
There was, you mentioned a couple last year. Did you have any feedback from the public or anyone, pro or con, about that last year?
There were some, one complaint, I believe, last year about the noise. And the committee, the Movies Above the Green, can answer how they addressed that. But it was addressed immediately at that event.
Who polices the cleanup and compliance? And secondly, related, it says you may acquire a $100 deposit. Should it be "shall"? I mean, without any kind of compliance mechanism, how are we going to be sure that it gets done?
Right. Typically, what the Public Works Department does is accept a check for $100. They don't deposit it. They just hold on to it. So, then they just return it once the items are returned. And so, the May statement is simply, the money's never deposited. We don't actually put the money in any kind of a fund or anything. So, it's kind of accepted.
And as to the first question, who checks to make sure the places?
The applicant is responsible for all the litter and cleanup. They can get trash containers from the Public Works Department, but they're responsible for emptying those trash containers. If we receive any, if we receive complaints in the morning that there is litter everywhere, they would be held responsible. And we would enforce it with our enforcement officer.
Okay. But no one from the city goes and checks the site the following morning to see that it was appropriately. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, I can clarify that. Yeah, our Parks, Buildings, and Grounds crews, they service that area. If there's a problem, they let us know right away. And we get in with the applicant. The $100 deposit is for the items that they may borrow from our cash. We require that as a deposit. And it's worked very well. You know, we've only had to cash one person's check when things didn't get back like they were supposed to. But that's how the system works. Our crews...
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You mentioned then there that soda and popcorn will be offered. Is that, are people buying that, or?
I would prefer that Ms. Robin Paisley describe the food at that event. But there will be soda pop and additional food. And it will be all catered and prepackaged food. And they'll be using the money that they collect in the sale of those items for a fundraiser.
Oh, great. Robin, get up here and explain this for us. Because if it's free popcorn, I'm going.
Sorry, you have to recuse yourself then.
Robin, for the record, if you just give us your name and address.
Robin Paisley, 301 West Gunnison Avenue. So, during the movie, the popcorn and soda is free. We are opening up these events for fundraisers. We've had a couple of different school organizations approach us, asking if there was a way to raise funds for uniforms. And so, for specifically team sports. So, we're planning on doing that because June... So we're planning on doing that because June is the least attended as far as the numbers of people. We are not going to use that one as a fundraiser for those events. We're actually using it as a fundraiser for the Woodland Park Roots Project, who puts this event on. And we will be serving...we're going to start the event at 7:00 so that people can come with their families and purchase food items. And it's been cleared through Erin Doucette at the county because it's a fundraiser. So we will have more than packaged items. We will have hot dogs, but those are pretty well-treated with substances when you buy them, so they're safe as far as cooking standards go. And I will have chips and candy and those kinds of things available for purchase, but the sodas and the popcorn during the movie are always free.
And so what are the movie selections? What's...what's on the shortlist?
Sure. From what I understand from Debbie Pinello at the Yew Pass Cultural Center, we use their licensing to cover the showing of the movies. And from her, I understand that I can't announce the movies or display the names of them because they don't have that kind of licensing that covers that, but I can tell you that this first movie has an animated sponge in it. So we are trying to show movies this year, this summer, that will attract more of the older children and students. Historically, had lots of families with toddlers and school-aged children, but a lot of times by the middle of the movie, they're running around in circles from all the, you know, sugar in their system. And because we're doing high school and possibly middle school fundraisers, we're hoping to attract that age range. So movie choices may be a little different this year because of that.
Thank you, Robin. Any other questions, council? Okay, if not, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
And we'll call for a motion.
No, you seem to be very...
Oh, my gosh. Call for a motion to consider request by Holly Morel, event organizer, to operate Movies Above the Clouds special event.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No one have any other questions? Food, movies?
Apparently, I'm supposed to approve this and not consider it, so...
I just corrected.
I will approve it then.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. And we will move on for the last bit of new business. And yours is the floor, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is again under new business, item 10b. It is a request by Dirt Riders of Colorado, Eric Nikem. He is the Super Enduro Event Organizer for that temporary use permit special event, and he's applying tonight to permit camping at the Yew Pass Saddle Club Outdoor Arena with an address of 19570 East US Highway 24. Incidentally, the temporary use permit has already been administratively approved, and he has picked it up and signed it. So tonight, we are just discussing the potential and the permit to camp onsite. The site is located south of the downtown area along Highway 24 in this general vicinity on this map. It is the Yew Pass Cultural...it is the Yew Saddle Club Arena site. This is a map that was submitted and is in the staff report packet, and what it identifies in the pink is the camping areas. He shows one spectator...one camping area in the spectator parking area. He shows another camping area within the vendor area, and then he shows another one in the pits. The camping units that will use these camping areas are self-contained units and are typically the units that come with the participants, the motocross racers or the riders and all of their equipment that comes with them, as well as the vendor's equipment and their needs. So the applicant is proposing to allow for a maximum of 60 camping units. Not...I mean, 60 could occur all at one time, but he's looking at maybe 40 the first night and maybe 20 the second night, so there'll be stagger. Staff has reviewed and analyzed this application for camping request pursuant to Section 1812. 1812 is the camping in a non-designated area, section of the municipal code, that does require council review and a permit to be issued by council. Section 1812030 is the section that lists the permit conditions for camping in non-designated areas. In these conditions, it talks about requiring within the permit a specified period for the camping to occur, the maximum units that will occur, the connection to water and sewer, the types of unit trash, garbage, and debris, and all of that type of impact. Staff has reviewed the application with respect to these conditions and these municipal code sections and does find no concerns as conditioned in our recommendation. Referrals were sent to the Public Works Department as well as the field inspector in the Public Works Department, and they have no concerns as well with the camping on this site. Public notice was simply a publication of this agenda item for tonight's meeting. Staff does recommend approval of camping subject to 10 conditions that are in the staff report that were attached. The conditions relate to a time period. So the camping on that site will be limited between 10:00 AM on June 19th through 3:00 PM on June 21st, so two nights of camping. The designated location is as pursuant to his map that he submitted at the Yew Pass Saddle Club site and in those areas that he has designated. Number of units are limited and are reserved for event volunteers and riders only with no more than 60 units permitted pursuant to this condition. Services are not to be...all the units are not to be connected to city water and sewer. The units are to be self-contained. The applicant, the property owner, is responsible for all onsite and offsite trash, debris, or litter that emanates from any camping event, and is responsible for cleaning up the site. It is a private site, and he does have to ensure that he has it cleaned up so that...to the satisfaction of the property owner, which is the Yew Pass Saddle Club. If there are any complaints on the site, we've conditioned it that the applicant has to address those complaints and has to be responsive. All lighting shall be downcast and shielded and shall be turned off by 9:00 PM out of respect for the surrounding residences. Noise is such that the applicant is under the municipal code section for the noise control, 941, noise of the municipal code. And finally, the applicant is subject to and must comply with all representations made in his use permit application for camping.
Thank you, Laura.
And Mr. Mayor, there...Eric is here tonight, and he's available to speak if you have any questions about his proposed special event and/or his camping.
Terrific. Thank you very much. You want to start, Ken?
I'd be happy to. My question really revolves around the entrance off of Highway 24, and that all the local residents are not used to a lot of traffic coming and going out of that entrance on the 24. I just wondered if there's any provision either from the police department or signage or anything to kind of try to help control that, because it sounds like there'll be a fair amount of activity coming and going from that entrance.
Right. The impacts from the traffic accessing to and from the event were addressed as part of the temporary use permit application, not so much the camping permit request that is before us tonight. It was reviewed by the Colorado State Patrol, and together, they worked out a traffic control plan that everyone, including the Public Works Department, can agree to.
Is that something you could briefly share with us, or is that for Bill maybe?
I think Bill would...
Yeah, I met with Colorado State Patrol, and this being the first year, this event will be very similar to the Rocket Gem Show. Very similar to the Saddle Club events. If it turns out to be a bigger event than we think, then that's probably a good thing because we have a lot of people coming to Woodland Park. But we don't believe this first year that it requires any special signage or traffic control or anything like that. The police department, myself, and State Patrol will be monitoring it, and if there's issues that come up, I've already met with the police department, and we have a plan as do we with the State Patrol.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under recommendations, it indicates no more than 60 at any time, but on the application, there's a handwritten note that says plus or minus 60 at one time. So I'm assuming that the recommendation would be the overriding, and the application part is in error?
Yes. The application, the parenthetical comment was my comment after getting clarification from the applicant in terms of exactly how many units might be onsite at one time, and the condition reflects the 60. So while he does not believe there will be 60 units at one time, it's possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mom?
Since this is the first year, we're not really familiar what type of activity goes on. Is this kind of like Sturgis in South Dakota? Or is it going to be...where are the bike races?
I would defer to the applicant, and he can give you a very detailed description.
Motocross?
It's motocross.
Where are they going to do in the motocross?
It was on the chart.
Oh, okay.
It was on the...Eric, why don't you get up here and talk to us?
This is Eric Nikem, 622 Columbine Road, Woodland Park. Motocross is a well-known term. This is going to be an enduro cross. We laying out a small track with some rocks, logs, and some tires and some obstacles. So it's going to be very slow speed, more into the rider's skills. So Saddle Club is a perfect area for that. So we're building the track in the next two weeks. We anticipate between 50, 60, 70 riders, fairly small spectators, of course, the camping. Again, it was set between 20 to 40. Again, that was added up. I don't think we're going to have 60 campers. If you go to a motorcycle race, a lot of riders come from out of town. I looked at the applicants. Now we have about 30 riders. Most of them are local Colorado Springs, Florissant, Woodland Park. I think there's only one guy from Texas. We have one guy from California coming. I think that guy will stay in a hotel. So I think it's going to be a very small group, 20 riders, maybe some workers that we have that come from Denver that bring their RV. So it would be very convenient for them to stay at the spot, set up their equipment. They don't have to leave and come back the next morning. They'll come in all very gradually. I don't think they're going...they are...will not arrive all at the same time, so I think the traffic coming in is not going to be a problem. The crowd, what kind of campers will we have? Serious riders. This is a serious event for a lot of riders that come. This is not a Sturgis or, you know, where people used to come to have party. So I think there will be no problem with the campers that will be there. Their lights will go out at 9:00, they'll go to bed at 10:00, and they wake up fresh to go racing the next day. So if you have any more questions about the taco racing or the campers?
I'm a little confused of the key here. Could you just show us on the map where the track is in red?
Yes. So our track will be over here, which is...here's the corral, and here's the parking for the gemstone event. Our track will be over here. We chose this location with the embankments that it has, and it sits a little deeper so spectators can sit on at least two sides, and we're building a little bit of a wall on that side to the pits. And where most of our parking will be will be over here in the corner. Here's the trailer park, and it's in the corner, so we're going to flatten it out, and the riders will come in this way, and that's where 90% of our campers will be. The riders will be over here. We have a couple vendors. I don't anticipate that they will be there the night before or staying here. They might leave their equipment there, but I don't think they have camping RVing there to do some. So it's going to be in this area mainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil?
I'll try to just ask you questions about camping. This first goes to staff. How many campers or RVs do we normally accommodate during the Rocket Gem Festival?
Quite a few.
You know, it seems like many of the individual vendors do come in their own self-contained RVs, and I'm going to guess that maybe it's about 60 to 80 at the most. And we've never had issues with that event.
Very similar.
Yeah, very similar. And I noticed on the schematic that you do have porta-potties, and you...those will stay up for the duration of the event?
Yes.
And be available then to the campers since they're not going to be able to hook up to water or sewer out there?
Right.
And will you...this is really not a question about the camping. I should have asked this question before. Do you...are you required to put the area where you're going to do the actual skills test back to its original condition at the end of the event?
That will be an agreement that we have to make with the Saddle Club, so we're still working on that.
But would you say that you're intent to?
I guess our intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Laura?
I have lots of questions. Congratulations, Eric. This is exciting. I don't think we've had an event like this in Woodland Park before, have we? So we're bringing in a whole new crowd of people buying things up here.
That would be in line at Starbucks?
At Starbucks. Each rider, they have to do a fee. I'm sure it's a pretty large fee, and so there'll be trophies. And this is a nationally recognized event, isn't it? This competition right here will be nationally recognized, correct?
In some fashion, yes. It's their first year. We're part of the Pike's Peak Speed Week, and that's how we started. We met with a couple promoters, and the organization of the Pike's Peak Speed Week wanted to add a couple more events to make it a week of motorcycle-related, car-related events. So we had a couple ideas, and it came down to this was the best idea for us, for Woodland Park, for myself, you know, to make it happen. So back to drawing board, what is the possibilities? Is Woodland Park involved? Yes, you guys were open for the idea. We found a location, and it grew from there. So it was very nice to see the support from Woodland Park as a city. The Saddle Club in particular was very helpful. So to come back to another question, hopefully, we'll get some recognition because it's part of the Speed Week. We're on their website. It's a national known event, and hopefully, we can grow from there. We have, again, three really good riders. Tomorrow is the X Games in Austin, and one of our participants might be the winner of the X Games there tomorrow. We have two good riders that might be the winner tomorrow at the X Games and come back with gold. So we have that maybe. Those guys might be here. For the rest, it'll drop down to some local guys and then some amateurs that'll come as well. We didn't want to do a whole bunch of amateur riders. We want to make it a spectator-friendly event instead of, you know, look, we're doing good with 500 riders. No. You know, we want to keep it small. I don't think we can do 500 riders because it's a lot of racing. We cannot put the whole program in a day with 500 riders. You know, it's a small track. It's race after race. So our maximum is about 100, 120 riders, and we want to focus to some good riders, some more spectating, and I think that was the purpose of the Speed Week and the purpose to get this event going is to get more people into town. That was the whole purpose for Sports Corporation, which is the big force behind the Hill climb. They are based in Broadmoor, and they just want to get more beds filled up, you know? And Woodland Park said that is still within the region. You know, we have only about 85 beds here in Woodland Park, so we will fill that up, and the rest will go to Fall Springs. So hopefully, we get enough people to enjoy the event and grow from there. If the Saddle Club property sells, then they are open maybe to do something on their new site in the vine.
One more question. Noise of the motorcycles, what is...because it's a slow ride over obstacles and stuff, I'm pretty sure they're not going to be very loud. And what is the competition times? I mean, early in the morning till late at night or?
9:00 till about 4:30.
Okay, so that's reasonable.
Right. Yeah.
And then, any big sponsors that are coming up here? Would we have news crews up here?
We're still working on some media, but I think through the Sports Corporation, we'll have some TV coverage and hopefully be on TV. We'll be on TV already with promoting this Pike's Peak Speed Week. I'm not sure if aired yet, but they have...okay, this is the Speed Week... I'm not sure if aired yet, but they have, okay, this is the Speed Week. It starts off in Woodland Park, June 20th with the Supreme.
So I'll get to see you on TV.
So that will be on TV. There are some ads in the newspaper. We're going to be on the radio. The radio will come between 11:00 and 1:00, live, and they're going to have some radio commercials and tickets giveaway as well the week before on iHeartRadio, Magic FM.
Wow.
So I think we're going to get a lot of Woodland Park pushing and, you know, so it's going to be, it's going to be good and exciting for everybody else. Yes.
You'll have to bear with me a little bit. I've kind of forgotten, maybe Sally or someone else can answer. Is all this property in the city or the county?
It's all in the city now.
So any liability concerns are being handled with the city? Any liability insurance or anything?
This property is not owned by the city.
It's private, right?
It's private.
All right. So it's up to the owner to deal with that. All right.
And I noticed on the schematic you had indicated there will be an ambulance. Is that ambulance going to be there for the entire period? And who is that ambulance?
Yes, that's the one here in Woodland Park. You pass ambulance services, and they're going to be there on site. If somebody needs to be transported to the hospital, then most likely another ambulance will come, or that one will leave, and then we'll wait till the next one will come.
But that ambulance won't be there overnight? It'll just be for the duration of the event?
Only, yeah, they will be there half hour before the first race starts, 8:30, I think we told them to be there, 8:00, 8:30. Yes.
John? You will have an agreement with the property owner then on cleanup and putting it back into its original condition as Mayor Protam asks?
Yes, we will.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Exciting.
Big scenario. I didn't hear you say anything about...
If you want to check on popcorn.
Free food, yeah.
Free popcorn?
There's two of you guys, you know.
If I could add one comment to Mr. Schaefer's question there, it is the intent that if this is successful and the Saddle Club property doesn't sell, that, you know, perhaps it returns next year. And so that's part of the agreement with the Saddle Club that I think they're, they're working on, that we're hoping that this thing will blossom like all the other events here in Woodland Park, and so...
I'm thinking if worse comes to worse, if the property sells, we'll give them two weeks, or we will clean up within two weeks, let's say. I think that's, that's what we are thinking, and that's what we'll do. You know, if the property sells, then we'll, two weeks to remove all the materials that we have on site.
Yeah. Probably don't have to worry about that.
Right, but if you zoom out a little bit, if you zoom out a little bit, I think the trailer park is right there, isn't it? Is that correct, Sally?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't even be seeing that anyways from the road?
No, correct.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, you will, you will not see?
I didn't even know that land existed there.
Whatever, yes. It is not visible.
The track material is right there.
Yes.
Anything else?
Thank you, Eric.
Eric, thanks.
Thank you so much.
I guess one more question. Do the riders know there's a nice little spot across the street to eat?
We'll let them know. What's your name at the restaurant?
Selvian.
Yeah, really. Shameless.
Good luck. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll call for a vote.
I would come in.
I can, if anyone wants to come forward. There was nobody on this list, but if anyone would like to, this is a good time.
It's very.
If you do, please step forward.
You're on.
You're on.
JR Gavin, 311 East Bowman Avenue. I'd just like to ask the applicant if the spectators could park overnight.
No, they're not.
Good answer.
No, I think, I think if we open that for spectators to come, then I think it opens a whole other, it's just for the convenience for the riders, for our club members that come from far away, and that's it. And we will, we will post that note. Not that somebody can come early. We want those people that come and spectate to go to a campground, you know, and they, they can do that. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll call for a motion then.
I will do this. Motion to approve applicant for Dirt Riders of Colorado, Eric Nijcamp, event organizer for a temporary use permit for overnight camping at 19-19570 East US Highway 24 for the Rocky Mountains Super Enduro Special Event.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Suzanne.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carl Smith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, and Eric, I'll just reiterate what Noel and everyone else has kind of said. Thank you for, in conjunction with Jeff Mosher and Colorado Sports Corp, thanks for bringing this to our community. I think it's going to be a great event, and hopefully it grows in the future years. So thank you for all your hard work, and very much appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I've got a little list today, and we will start with Vicki Russell. Could you just state your name and your address, Vicki?
I'm Vicki Russell at 708 Pine Street, Woodland Park, and I was really here in support of somebody else, Mr. Ottman, in regards to cats, but this is something that I've been dealing with for a while now, and so I wanted to kind of bring this up to the council and just see what we can do. I've got the dog and other animal regulations here, and the definition for animals for this regulation is any living vertebrate creature, domestic or wild, including without limitation dogs and stray animals. And my understanding is that there was an addendum or an attachment that made cats exempt from this.
Sally, can you speak to that?
I am not the most knowledgeable about the animal section. She asked me a zoning question, I can handle that, but I don't. I think Chief may have dealt with animal enforcement more so than I have.
I've been here since 1979, and we have had a cat ordinance during that time.
Wouldn't they fall under other animals?
They might.
Okay. Teller County Sheriff has said that they're exempt and that there's nothing we can do. And according to the regulations, you know, the keeping of animals in Woodland Park constitutes a potential threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Woodland Park. And that's exactly what we would like to bring up. We have a list of items that have happened to us over the past number of years, coming to property damage, decks, you know, they, they spray on your decks, it's horrible smelling. They've damaged our boat mainly because they sleep in it, and if we try to shut it while it's wet, it gets moldy, so we have damage there. We've had damage to our plants, of course, they dig them up. I also have rental properties. We have two different rental properties, and we've had tenants complain, and there's nothing we can do. The only thing that the sheriff has told us that we can do is use a not humane way to, to make them go away. So that means we would have to purchase stuff to get, keep the cats that don't belong to us off of our property. And to me, that's a concern. Also, there's a health concern. You know, someone like me who's allergic to cats, we've had cats sleeping on the bench outside my office window. I'm a remote worker and I work from home. They sleep on the bench out there, and of course, my allergies go crazy, so there's a health concern. We also have some concerns in regards to our animals. We don't know if these animals are stray, feral pets. We don't know if they're being taken care of, they're a danger to our pets. And we actually have to go out there and clean up their waste, their feces, or, you know, have to worry about the urine that they have in our, in our plants. And, you know, that doesn't even talk about the, what they do to our birds.
Okay, I appreciate it. Let me ask you this. What do you propose? What would you propose that we would do if possible?
You know, and I looked online about that a lot just today. You know, I know there's a lot of regulations around that says, you know, that the cats should be confined to their property, just like dogs are. You know, our dogs are in the backyard, or we keep them in the front yard. If they go off the property, then they can be tipped up. But with cats, Teller County will not do it because they say they're exempt. We were told by Pikes Peak Humane Society, because the TCRAS, I think it is, up here, will not do anything with cats. They won't take cats or anything. So Pikes Peak has told us that we need to trap them and bring them down. So the one time that we did do that, we had this one particular cat that was just driving us nuts, and we ended up capturing it and taking it down the Humane Society. We had talked to neighbors, nobody knew whose cats it is. Everybody kind of goes quiet when you start asking whose cats they are. And so we took it down the Humane Society. We did not want this animal put down or anything. So we put up signs at the mailboxes, letting them know, this is a cat that we trapped, we brought it to the Humane Society. If it is yours, please go get it and please keep it indoors, you know, or keep it away from our property. We were turned into the sheriff's office. They came to my house and said what we did was illegal because we had in essence stolen their cat.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's a couple others that would like to speak on the same subject, and we'll discuss it, but thank you for being here.
Great.
Ben, go ahead. Chief?
The definition of animal includes the word cat, but the action items in the ordinance refer to things done by dogs. There's a section on cruelty of animals, and animals, cats would be included under that, but we generally use the state statute for cruelty of animals because it's more effective. But the items that talk about impounding animals, animals not to run at large and so forth, all refer to dogs. If we wanted to do something like this, it would take action by the council, and this ordinance was designed to mirror the ordinance used in Teller County to a great extent, with a lot of collaboration between the city and the county. I would recommend if that's something you consider, that we look at that sort of collaboration with the county. I'm not suggesting it's what we need to do, I'm just talking about methods if that was where you decided to go. I would not, with the authority here to pound a cat, I think it would constitute a theft.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and one thing I want to bring up about that, though, that's very strange, is I understand there's a woman who does TNR, she does trap, neuter, and release. You know, if she's given the opportunity to go out there and trap and bring them in and get them neutered, and then release them back out in the wild, how does, how does she know it's not a pet?
That's a good question.
Somebody else knows, ma'am.
Yeah, this is what the Teller County Sheriff, Animal Control Woman, told me. She said, you know, you could talk to her, and it's like, well, how come she can do it, but we can't?
That's a good question. I'll do somebody else from...
Yeah, I understand. It just seems like there's no really clear rules.
It's just not in here. It's...
Well, she has said specifically, there was an addendum that excluded cats, but I haven't been able to have anybody tell me where they can find it.
It's just not included in the ordinance.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. I believe Beverly Shaw, is that the?
This is also regarding the cats. Originally 12 years...
Could you just, I'm sorry, could you just give us your name and address just a second? You can hold the microphone down a little bit if you'd like.
Can you hear me? Beverly Shaw at 520 County Road.
Thank you.
When I originally moved here 12 years ago...
That's right.
I was living on North Center Street, and much to my surprise, during the night, when it was drizzling rain, a terrible odor coming from my yard, and evidently, most of the cats in the neighborhood enjoyed using, right under my bedroom window, they would use that as their litter box. I had put, when I went and I bought screening and put it down and kept it down with bricks, but it didn't seem to deter them, they still used it anyways. And then one week, I went on vacation, and while I was gone, a woman, a neighbor, had convinced the police department who she felt that she heard her kitten in my garage, which was all locked up. And the policeman broke into the garage, he took a log off the side of the garage, went through the insulation and the inner wall to rescue this kitten. And when I talked to her later, I said, she really needed to keep them in, and she said, well, you know, cats just sort of do their own thing. But I've owned a cat, and I had a cat that when she came to the door and I went like that, she turned around and went back in the house. You can train them. So cat owners that use the excuse that, well, they're just wild and they want to do their own thing, that's not true. You also will find bits and pieces of cats, unfortunately, that have been captured by a raccoon, or maybe a bear, who knows? And they also are not being inoculated, so you worry about your own animals. So that's about the only comment I have.
Noel, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to speak about it.
Absolutely. Anytime. And Mr. Ottman?
My name's Paul Ottman. I live at 1420 Northwoods Drive. I've been a resident of Woodland since 1978, and you're right about the ordinance. Cats have not been addressed. Right. But I think this time has come to address this. Just one brief thing that says under intent is that the council has adopted the animal control for the potential threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Animal owners, keepers, possessors must therefore assume full responsibility and punishment for the actions and conditions of their animals. We have no recourse. You are our last recourse. I've been working with Rick Circa. He's done everything he's been over backwards. His hands are tied. Teller County Animal Control will not address it because under definition, it does not specify cat, either domestic or wild or known as feral. My personal situation is three of them live next door outside. The owner has properly committed to Rick, they're his, he keeps them. He just doesn't keep them where he should. I do not want these cats, I did not ask for these cats. They, like the lady said, have ruined property. I've changed my landscaping three times. I'm tired of that. So I'm asking the city council, I have spoken with Suzanne, I spoke with David, I've worked with Rick, I've worked with the county. You folks are our last recourse. This is a city, I was told by my neighbor, I live in the mountains, I can do whatever I want. That is wrong. There's laws. There's codes. Any questions for me?
I don't think so. I appreciate your approach, Mr. Ottman, and certainly we will consider the situation.
I hope you take it very seriously, because I've been a resident of this town since 1978. I know this lady personally, I know that gentleman personally, I know Bill, I've worked in this community, I love this place, I don't want to see it go downhill. And like any law, there comes a tide, and I think the tide is now.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here. You're welcome.
I will always be with these folks. We have a few cats. Make sure that they're under our control in our house. Our vet says you don't want to let them out, you know, they'll get all kinds of diseases. And also, if you'd like to keep them out, the foxes will get them or something else. So I think it's time that we do, assign the staff to look into this and see if we can amend that ordinance to make sure that my cats are covered, covered by it.
Right, I totally agree with that comment because that is our recourse, is to add them to the codes under description so they would fit at any animal large, and also licensing and maybe inoculation, because my neighbor has four young children, a toddler and three little boys and a little girl. He has commented numerous times that he comes out, they're in the shed, his children play in that yard, they leave their waste. So earlier you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that what can we do? And I think the legal approach to this situation is to add a code on licensing, shots, proper shots, and put them in the description so Teller County Animal Control then can find or make you run a dog at large. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much. Staff, we should probably take this under advisement, and we will discuss it. So we appreciate everybody being here and filling us in on what's going on in the cat world. Okay, we move on to Ann Kozleski.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and city staff. I'm Ann Kozleski, I live at 790 Sunrise Circle in Morning Sun Subdivision, across Highway 24 from Walmart area. And as some of you know, this past Tuesday, two days ago, I was crossing the highway, and almost got across when a woman was westbound and decided to ignore, or didn't see, or whatever, the red lights and hit me. And fortunately, I sustained minor injury. I have a sprained wrist and a lot of bruising and soreness and tenderness, which I won't show you. And my car has substantial damage, I don't know the extent of it yet, the insurance adjuster's going to be looking at it. And I know, I mean, I'm grateful every day that it wasn't worse, that I wasn't a half second slower, because I would have been broadsided. And so many times during the day, over the past several days, I've been thankful that it wasn't any worse, I was thankful that she hit me, rather than proceeding onto the Safeway light, where people may have been backlogged and have a domino effect, and we're ending them, or that someone wasn't crossing the highway, and they were killed. So, I mean, that's the good part. I do thank the city and the city manager for their campaign against no tolerance of running red lights. I thank the police department for their, the times that they periodically have been very visibly waiting in the medium or on the side at both Walmart intersection and Safeway. But obviously, you can't have a patrol person there 24 hours a day, that is infeasible. And what I'm, my purpose here tonight is not to gain sympathy, although I would accept all of that. But.
Only if you show us your bruises.
My suggestion, and I don't even know if it's possible, but I, to put cameras on the lights to catch the people running the red lights, because I think like all children, if we know we can get away with something, we're going to be more apt to do it. But if we know there's a penalty involved, we're maybe going to stay within the rules a little better. And I would say most people do obey the rules and don't run the red lights. Another consideration I thought of was to approach CDOT, because I know it's a state highway, and see if somewhere, before you get to the Walmart light, they can decrease the speed limit. You know, when you are heading east and approach Cascade, the, or, yeah, the speed goes from 55 to 50 to 45, and there's flashing lights and stuff, so people know that if they slow down, and if you're going slower, you're probably more apt to see lights changing. And, you know, even at 45, I could have been hit, but it would have been a, you know, smaller hit. And I don't know, like I said, I don't know if that's possible, and how you go about getting in touch with CDOT, or if you do it, or I do it, or whoever. And I know the camera is considered by many to be an invasion of privacy, because obviously it would also be recording people who aren't breaking the rules. But if you're not breaking the rules, you really don't have anything to worry about. And I think we've all, I would guess that everyone has flown at some time since 9/11. And we all have become used to, even if we don't like it, we have been used to having our luggage scanned, having people from security go through and touch our belongings. We've been, you know, had to go through the thing and turn around and be scanned. And I haven't, but some people have been patted down. And yeah, that's an invasion of our privacy, we have to take off our shoes. But is the giving up of that little bit of privacy worth someone's life being saved? You know, I think that's, for me, I think safety should be a priority for all of us. And I know on April 6th, there was a fatality at that intersection. My accident happened just before 2:00 on Tuesday, just right around 2:00 o'clock on Wednesday, the very next day, there was another accident there. Now, I'm sure between, I know there have been many more, I don't know the dates of them, or the times, or anything, those are recent. So those are the things I would submit as a consideration and what to do, because I think this is a fabulous community, and I know it isn't necessarily the residents running the red lights, but if everybody slows down, and everybody quits running red lights, we'd all be better off. I don't know if you have any questions or want clarification, but I thank you for your time and attention.
Well, thanks, and clearly, we're all sorry about the.
I'm sorry.
We're all sorry about the mishap.
Oh, thank you. Me too.
Obviously, as you mentioned, our city manager is adamant, and is doing everything we can at this point relative to the city. I think maybe Chief might be able to answer some questions relative to the cameras. And you do know that CDOT's got a flashing yellow light prior to the time that you get to that intersection to indicate that the lights turn to red.
She was able to ignore that, too.
Yeah, absolutely. And they're not the only ones, just like you mentioned. Chief, can you comment on?
I really can't, we'd have to ask CDOT. And we can do that.
Okay. Phil?
Maybe Erin can comment on the cameras, because if you're talking about the kind of camera that takes a picture of red light runners, I think the legislature just ruled on that, and they're no longer allowed. Erin, can you?
The governor, they did. The legislature took an attempt to prohibit that statewide, but the governor vetoed that legislation.
Okay, so they are still permitted?
At this point, there is no overriding state law, and it is a matter of local issue, a local concern. So a local jurisdiction could do that on its own streets. The concern here is that this is a CDOT.
You'd have to get, yeah.
Highway, so I think, you know, that's, it's.
I've talked extensively with the chief about this in the last couple of months, you know, and over the years, frankly, because as the county and the city grow, there's more traffic, and it's a challenge to find the right balance between public safety and intrusiveness. But enforcement only goes so far, and then it becomes just a statistical matter of the likelihood of enforcement having a leveraging effect on people's behavior, which is modest. That's kind of the, you look at accident rates, I think is what he actually was quoted in the paper, saying, and again, I'm sorry, obviously, for an accident, Ann, very sorry.
Well?
I have a lot of sympathy with you. I almost got killed today with a car running through a red light, and he swerved away at the last minute. I was three quarters of the way through the intersection, and he's sitting right by. And, but it wasn't in Woodland Park. But in a case where somebody actually, if they're stopped, they've caused an accident and that sort of thing, is there anything we can do by upping the penalty so high that they'll wish they had never run that red light? What is the penalty right now for causing an accident running a red light?
It depends on, there's no special penalty because you caused an accident running a red light. So that's something the city could add, and you can go up to the limits specified in our municipal code. We tend to mirror fines authorized by the state, it's generally been what we've done, it's what a lot of municipalities do, we don't have to have the same fines as they do. With a red light violation, is, doesn't have a, running a red light and causing an accident like some parts of careless driving, with certain kinds of injuries have additional penalties, but just having a careless driving ticket in a traffic accident doesn't have an additional thing because you caused an accident, only if it's careless driving resulting in serious bodily injury death.
Chief, since we've stepped up the surveillance, if you will, relative to red light runners, how many citations have we issued over the last, say, 60 days?
I'd have to look it up.
Over 100?
I'd have to look it up.
Well?
But is there a jurisdictional issue? I mean, those intersections are in Woodland Park. One of the roads is 24.
Excuse me, the whole road and the right of way belongs to CDOT, and it's also regulated by CDOT, so we just have to ask them if it's possible, and they'll let us know.
Which we will, and I have a pretty good relationship with Karen Rowe at CDOT, she's the CDOT Region Two Manager, so I'll contact her. And unfortunately, they're very reactive to things, and they don't react very fast. But when they see the numbers going up, at least it's something that we can talk about. And I will follow up on that for you.
Perhaps the chief could give you the statistics on how many citations.
Absolutely.
And I did want to add, Mayor and Council, that Judge Bruce and Judge McClintock are both looking at the possibility of catching up, suggesting to council that the council catch up the general penalty provisions of our municipal code with the state penalty provisions. And that is something that the judges are both looking at and working on, and we would expect that we would be bringing an ordinance to council on that issue.
Great. So are you saying our fines are too low?
We have a maximum set in our code, and it is lower than what state law allows. Two years ago, the state legislature allowed for that to go up from $1,000, which it had been for quite a long time, and I think it was set two years ago at 1,265, 1,265, but it had an escalator in it. And so by virtue of that authority and state law, municipalities are able to adopt that increased rate and the escalator that increases it on an annual basis.
Great, thanks, Erin. Anybody else? Ann, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you for being here. Okay, I'll have anyone else signed up, do we have any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move forward to reports, and I will start, I've just got a few announcements to make, events for June 5th through July 2nd. Friday, June 5th, the Summer Farmer's Market and Arts and Crafts Fair is back, 7:00 to 1:00, it starts tomorrow. The new location is important, it's behind Vectra Bank and the Catholic Church parking lots. So starting tomorrow at 7:00 in the morning, I know a lot of you have looked forward to the opening of the Farmer's Market, I certainly have. Friday, June 5th, also tomorrow, the Woodland Music Series presents Jazz in June, Ute Pass Cultural Center at 6:30, and that is a free event. This Saturday, June 6th, the Citywide Garage Sale at the High School is always in the parking lot from 7:00 to 1:00, and you can call 687-3900 for details. Also Saturday, Tours of History Park resume, every summer Saturday, 11:00 to noon, and those are free. This coming Wednesday, June 10th, the Sixth Annual Bike Rodeo at Meadowwood Sports Complex, and that's from 10:00 until noon, that too is a free event. Next Friday, a week from tomorrow, the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, Ute Pass Cultural Center, it's from 4:00 until midnight, and you can call 630-4978 for information. The following Saturday, a week from this Saturday, the Woodland Music Series Colorado College Festival Orchestra Concert at the Ute Pass Cultural Center, that is at 7:00, and that too is a free event. And Sunday, June 14th, the Family Friendly Movie Above the Clouds at the Midland Pavilion, starts at sunset, and all kinds of food. And Saturday, June 20th, the kickoff for the Pike's Peak Speed Week with the Super Enduro Motorcycle Competition, and it says here across from the Swiss Chalet.
Oh, no.
9:00 to 5:00, so we'll look forward to that. That's all I have today, and we'll move on to council reports, and Mayor Portem Harvey, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll just catch people up on our most recent Charter Review Committee meeting, which occurred last night here at City Hall, and bring everybody up to speed on the issues that we have addressed to date in the Charter Review Committee. One of the first issues that we addressed and adopted and will recommend to the council later this year as a possible submission for ballot initiative, is time requirement for the annual report. That was pretty much a housekeeping recommendation that would change the charter to move the publication of our annual report to coincide with 21 days after the budget is actually, or the annual audit is actually published. The second issue that we have discussed and agreed to propose to the council later in the year is a vacation of vacant utility easements by resolution, and this charter change would recommend vacating utility easements by ordinance and changes to, and change it to a resolution. It's nuanced, but it is one of those things that has added time to that process for applicants, and we wanted to perhaps eliminate that. Number three is clarification of the conditional use permit, and that was a turn of the again in ordinance and change that to a resolution for the same reason. And then, we discussed term limits, or terms of office for elected officials, I made some recommendations on, to clarify the wording in our charter to coincide with recent state changes to term limits for elected officials. Then last night, we continued that discussion, and we will have some wording to address some other aspects of terms for elected officials. We also talked last night, and this is an interesting one, because we didn't really come to any conclusion, and we will discuss it at our next meeting, and that was using the newspaper as our official means of public notice. There are a couple of instances in the charter that talk about the official city newspaper, and it's something that we consider every year on an annual basis, the council. And in lieu of the fact that a lot of folks, I still read the newspaper, every morning, I read the newspaper. I like the one where you get the black print on your fingers, but we acknowledge that there are a lot of people who don't use the newspaper anymore. So maybe posting public notices could be done in another manner, perhaps using the city website. So we discussed either eliminating that wording altogether about the official newspaper, or finding some way to provide more flexibility for us on the council. Excuse me. And then finally, last night, we talked about issues with mayoral and council vacancies and how we fill those. And again, no conclusion, but we started the dialogue last night, and we will take that back up for consideration in our next meeting, which will be the 5th of August. We're going to take a little break in July, and again, those are open to the public, and if you've got some views or something that you'd like to help us in our Charter Review, then we certainly welcome you at those public meetings. That's all we have.
Thanks, and thanks, girl, for doing that. Erin, thanks for sitting in on those, and everybody involved in that, that's a great process, and we all thank you. Okay, move on. Mr. Carlson?
Yeah, I'm a board representative to, I mean, council representative to various boards. Earlier this week, I met with the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors, and also with the Main Street Board of Directors, so I'll deal with one at a time. So I'll deal with one at a time. The aquatic project, we, the architect engineer has been working on the schematic design. He will finish by the fifteenth of June and we've had several meetings of engineers and users group with the architect to finalize the footprint. Water Technologies Incorporated is still rearranging the pools within the leisure area to have better adjacencies and stuff. They're the experts and we find to have a meeting on Monday to finalize that so that the schematic design can be done at, on the, by next, on the fifteenth. In the meantime, we're making progress also on hiring a construction manager, a general contractor and perhaps Bill can, might be speaking about that, but they pre-selected, or they had a shortlisting yesterday, I believe it was. And so we're on track for hiring a contractor if the schedule sticks, it'll be before the end of the June. So we're doing, by having an architect engineer working side by side with a general contractor, we'll get better pricing and then we'll also be able to do some things in parallel, like doing the foundation work while the architect's still designing the upper structures and that sort of thing. So we'll keep everybody informed as to the progress on that project, but it's looking really good. Also at our board meeting, Neil was there and he is doing an exemplary job, meeting with some high rollers in the area and he, I won't speak for him, but he's done a real good job lining up some really big bucks. So, but when those things become a little more firmer commitments, I'll leave it up to Neil to, when he's satisfied with being able to report on the amounts and the people and that sort of thing, the companies. I think everybody will be pleasantly surprised. Then on the Main Street program, it's a minor item, but it's still good. We, grand, five thousand dollars from DOLA and they're very positive that we will get it and the intent of the Main Street program is to put that towards the mural on the side of the Ute Pass Cultural Center. The board is also working to finalize its bylaws so that they can then submit a 501(c)(3) application. You have to have bylaws in a board and that sort of thing. So they're making good progress on that and there, the media project they're working on too is helping out with the Fourth of July event next to Ute Pass Cultural Center. So I'll try to report back monthly at least on how they're doing and all these various initiatives they're doing. So, or another thing is along Main Street, some of the vacant storefronts, we're going to try to have historical pictures in there, nice windows treatment so that people, when they walk along the Main Street, won't be looking into for sales signs and, so Bucks, for instance, will have a nice display of the history of Woodland Park and that sort of thing. So we'll probably hear more as far as projects are concerned next Wednesday night when we meet for our goals and objectives. And in that regard, in, like we did last year, I'm requesting that that goals and objective meeting be a special meeting as opposed to just a workshop so that we have minutes. That's basically the only difference between the two. And so if we have consensus here that it should be a special meeting with minutes, then I'd be pleased with that. Any opposition?
Would we have to treat it any differently in terms of noticing or?
Yes. Yeah. We have to advertise and publicize it anyhow because all of you will be together. So that'll be, a public notice will be done for that.
But then minutes, excuse me, minutes would be taken? Is that the automatic distinction between the two?
Typically, a work session and special meeting are the same. They're considered the same thing.
Okay. So they're not televised. How would minutes then be recorded?
We generally don't take minutes for work sessions or special meetings.
Okay.
Last year you did for three meetings. We had, you took minutes, so.
I'd have to talk to you offline because I don't know which meetings you're talking about.
Well, Erin, can you comment on that just in terms of?
I certainly can. Minutes are not required unless you have a meeting at which you are going to have action and make decisions and so there aren't, there's no requirement for minutes for work sessions.
Okay.
You need to meet the requirements of the open meetings law. You need to have it open to the public, but there are no, there's no requirement for minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Matthews?
I'll just say, from what I understand, I was not able to attend, but I think the event Saturday with the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful was a great success. I hear there was over a hundred people there for the barbecue and that and like I said, I was not able to do that, but it was a great success. Renee, unless you want to chime in and say something else, I heard it was a tremendous time.
Yes, it was. Other than.
I didn't give her any warning, so.
Well, it should be good then.
Of course. Now she has a new rank, so we have to be careful.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, we had a huge turnout for the event and actually, we were able to use our gift cards that we received the year before to pay for some of the things that were not donated, but otherwise, it didn't cost us anything this year to have the event, so that was outstanding, I think. But yeah, we had a huge turnout and we had more people come back for the barbecue, so we actually went through all of the food. So that was great. But we do have some things left over that were donated for next year, like beverages and paper supplies and things like that, so that was awesome. So, thank you for all those people who turned out to help. We really appreciate it.
And Suzanne, since you won't say, I mean, Renee, since you won't say this on your own, would you tell us about your new rank and your promotion?
So now I am post-certified, but I'm still doing the same job. The sheriff and undersheriff are actually out of town, so when they get back, we'll discuss what I'll be doing. So it'll be a surprise to me unless anybody else knows.
Oh, boy.
Congratulations on.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks. Anything else, Kim?
That's all.
Mr. Mello?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Sawyer?
I had a few things. Bill, your Parks and Ground Service do an amazing job in this town. I traveled to another city, which I will not mention, and it was not clean. And I came to this city and I just, I, I looked around as I was driving up and I just couldn't believe how clean the sidewalks are, how well the shrubs in the center of the road are, how everything's so well taken care of. So I just want to say thank you if you never hear it.
Well, thank you. That's Mr. Vander, Chris Lane and their crew. They do it all in the seasonal. I can tell you it's only going to get better because so much is starting to flower.
Yes. It's a, we have a beautiful city. We truly do. After going to this other city, I will not mention, some of you know where, but.
Pretty much everywhere.
There's no reason why I have to say it. Come on. I'm not going to say it. Offline.
Actually, before Saturday, I drove through town and I said, what do we have to clean up?
Yeah, there's nothing to clean up.
I was kind of wondering who, what people are going to be assigned to do because it's all so clean.
Yeah, I think I saw a couple walking up sixty-seven and their bag looked empty on Saturday, so it's a very clean town. Thank you.
The other thing, we were talking about a red light camera. If CDOT does approve, who would we ask to do a cost analysis for that? For one red light camera? Suzanne, would, do you do that? Would get a cost analysis?
It'd be a CDOT function.
CDOT would actually put in the red light camera?
It would have to, it's their street.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes more sense then. That's going to be difficult. And then we have CML next.
I'll be talking about that on when it's my turn.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaver?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thanks for being here.
Be thankful.
We are very thankful just to have you. We're very thankful. All right, we'll move on to Erin.
Mayor and Council, I don't have a report, but I am very thankful to be here. It's always such a pleasure, so thank you and thank you to your wonderful staff.
And we miss you when you're not here. I'll just say that. The city manager's not here, so Ms. Leclerc, our city clerk, will fill in for him.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two items for the staff. The first will be Wally Dingwell has some news and information that he'd like to share with the council.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mr. Mayor, Council, yesterday was slightly tense, but still a very exciting day for the city of Woodland Park. Our 2015 series Certificates of Participation went on the market at nine o'clock. Buying closed at ten-thirty. I am very pleased to say that we had an eighty-nine percent sale rate. That means that less than four hundred thousand of the total issue had to be underwritten by RBC, our underwriter on that. The markets, really since before the bond issue went on the market, have been going into decline and this week was particularly bad. With Mr. Butterey out of town, I was in regular contact Monday, Tuesday, and right up until about five minutes tonight on Wednesday morning with our financial advisor, Jim Manier. Also spoke at great length different times with our bond counsel, Mario Trimble, and also the folks at RBC, Nate Eckhoff, the general man, or the president of RBC and all of his people who were involved in that on the market desk and so on. Just trying to get a feel of where the market was going, what is going to be the best, what was going to be the best process for the city to follow. And changes were being made right up until not only the last minute, but past the last minute. About halfway through the buying process, we did get an email from Mr. Eckhoff saying that if the city would agree to a slight change in interest rates for three bond years, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, and two thousand twenty-six, they could secure a very large institutional order. Now, the magnitude of that interest rate change was not significant. For two thousand twenty-four, it meant the bonds would go from a three percent to four percent. For two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six, they went from three and a half to four percent again. The overall impact of that on the annual repayment was less than seven hundred dollars. So really, it came down to, I think a wise call on our part to say, yes, do it for the benefit of getting that large order. The retail market was fairly active, institutional was more active. A lot of the uncertainty that was in the market this week in particular was global in nature. Greece is very close to defaulting on their loans. That sends the IMF into a panic. It could affect the value of the euro. That has a trickle-down effect into the Asian market, into the US market and so on. And I'll quote the person on the market desk at RBC, pretty much verbatim, he said that the only shining star on Wednesday was the city of Woodland Park and our offering. So that was, that was refreshing news. Now, just to give you some facts and figures, the per amount of the bonds issued was three million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Some of the bonds were issued at premium and that means that you pay more than a hundred cents on the dollar to get those. But there's a benefit to the city for that and that is it encourages the sale of those bonds and in a weak market like we're in, again, drawing on the wise counsel of RBC and our financial advisor, Jim Manier, that seemed to be the best course of action for us to take. The net proceeds to the city, of course, part of that total proceeds will go to retire the nineteen ninety-nine COPs and there's a balance of approximately one point four million on those. If council recalls when those were originally taken out, the Public Works Building and the Police Operations Center were put up as collateral for both of those. Now, with the benefit of the grant that we, that the city secured for the fleet maintenance facility, we were able to exclude the fleet maintenance building, or I'm sorry, I said the fleet, the.
Public Works.
Public, public work. We were able to exclude the Public Works Building as collateral on this issue and only the Police Operations Center is collateral for the COP issue. So long and short of it, the city will be getting about two point, over two point two million dollars to go into the memorial park process, plus any remaining cash that there might be. It'll be approximately two point two-three-three million. The good news on interest rates, the projections we did, we were, we started higher than this. When we thought the market was going to be better, we ratcheted back the interest rate that we were using. We ended up using three point eight percent in our projections. The COPs closed at three point seven percent. So we're a bit ahead of the game there and just to refresh your memories on the bonds, projections on the bonds were four point three percent and we actually ended up with three point four percent on those, so. Both, both processes, the bonds and the COPs, were, I think, very, very successful for the city and I would like to publicly thank, even though they're not here, James Manier, our financial advisor, for his expertise, his guidance, his, his very in-depth knowledge of this whole process, Mario Trimble, our bond counsel, and of course, I would be grossly remiss if I did not mention our city attorney, Erin Smith. All three of those people were totally invaluable in this whole process, guiding us through a process that neither Mr. Butterey or myself were familiar with. I, I know I'm a few months older, we all are. I know I'm certainly wiser on bonds and COPs and a lot of it has to do with those three people I just mentioned, so thank you very much for your indulgence, councilor. Are there any questions I could answer for you?
Mr. Carlson?
So we did receive enough money in this, the market to finance the refinancing of the nineteen ninety-four COP.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine COP.
Yes.
Plus paying for what we needed in the way of money for the memorial park renovation.
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. That's correct. The, the total issue of the COPs, for the city's purposes, we can consider about a hundred percent sold. As far as the open market is concerned, eighty-nine percent or just approximately three million was sold. Our underwriter has, in effect, purchased that remaining four hundred thousand. And the funny thing is about that, and I don't know why, only one year, that four hundred thousand refers to only one year's issuance. Maybe someone didn't like that year for some reason. It didn't fit their client's investment pattern, perhaps, but yes, we have received all the funds that we need.
But the other point too, I think I raised this when we had our financial advisor here, but I don't remember was the bonds or the COPs, but will there be any penalty if we pay any of them off early?
I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I believe there is not.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, there are some that are, there's no call on some and then there are some that are accrable, so there's a redemption schedule.
Okay.
Wally, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. The second item we have, as Councilmember Sawyer was beginning to mention, the next council meeting, the week of six sixteen through six nineteen, the majority of you will be at CML. I am asking you by general consensus to cancel the six eighteenth city council meeting because there'd only be one council member present. I just need nodding of heads that it's okay with you. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all you have. Thank you very much. If that's all you have, we have no comments on written correspondence, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
I have too many. I'm trying to get.